I'd like to call the March 22nd, 2018 Board Meeting for Pickle City Schools to order. Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll.
Mr. Patrizio.
Here.
Mr. Ford.
Here.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here.
Mr. Bostick.
Here.
Mr. Height.
Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you should have had an opportunity to review the minutes from our February 22nd meeting, special meeting, also the regular meeting, work session, and March 20th, March 6th special meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
There's no further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And on the agenda, are there additions or corrections to the agenda? Okay, can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
If there's no other discussion, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There's no report for the Career Center Board because we haven't met yet. Legislative report.
We don't have a report.
I have nothing on hearing of the public on agenda items. Mr. Hiddle, the tax rate comparison on your report.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to ask you to approve the tax rates for FY19 school year, everything, or tax year, I should say. Everything is pretty much similar to what it was in the previous years. No drastic changes. Everything's pretty consistent with what we've talked about in the past. Property tax revenues tend to just be creeping up slowly, but no major changes in the tax rates.
Okay. Are you going off your report? Financial report?
Are there any questions about any of the financial reports that you had? And any questions about the tax rates? That's the two things we're voting on. Okay.
If there's no questions, no further, do we have a motion to approve the monthly reports and the tax rates?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second and further discussion. Please call the roll, Mr. Hiddle.
Mrs. McMackin.
Here. Aye.
Mr. Bostick.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Patrizio.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye. Superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening. We are hosting the board meeting this month at Pickle Central Intermedia School, and as always, we have that principal and a team of people will come forward and talk a little bit about some of the programming that they're doing and the good things that are happening. So, Mr. Kaufman is our principal. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman, for coming forward and sharing your great events.
Good evening. Back in October, at our last hosted board meeting, we kind of gave some updates on our academics and PBIS and Tier One portions. For this meeting, I wanted to kind of do it a little different, a little change up. It's kind of like the weather did with us yesterday, throw us a curveball, highlight some of the high-quality programming that's really taken off since we've opened our building that goes on here that really showcased the other things, if you will, that are often overlooked but make an impact on kids, our community and the culture that's, in my opinion, really thriving here at Pickle Central. Before I have our groups give a brief presentation, I want to point out that one of the themes here that we continually try to strive for is to create an atmosphere and a climate and a culture that really showcases a school that looks and feels like an extraordinary school for kids. And I'm super proud of my teachers and what they do here every day, super proud of my admin team. It is, it's a collective unit that just can't happen with one single person, so I do want to tip a hat to those folks that are here working side-by-side every day. Also want to give thanks to amazing people behind our curriculum department, our student services. What they do for us here at this building with 800 students is phenomenal, and we couldn't do it without them, so I truly appreciate their support. But one of the things we talk about, too, is really thinking outside the box here with our programming, and we try to strive for a place that kids love to learn and teachers love to come and teach at. And tonight, we will be showcasing for you four of 17 committees that have developed that we actually have some student reps here. So, tonight, I would like to invite representatives. We're going to start with our Run Club. They're going to come up one at a time here and kind of tell you a little bit about what they do, how many people are involved, and what kind of impact it's been making on them. Thought that would be a cool idea to do with kids telling you versus me standing up here and telling you. So, at this time, I'm going to start with our Run Club group, and I want to introduce Mrs. Crystal Ayers, who is our Run Club Chair, and she's going to come up with some of her people. So, come on up.
Hello, guys.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Crystal Ayers. I'm a sixth-grade teacher here at PCIS. Four years ago, at Bennett Intermediate, my principal Jenny Gerhart thought of the idea, "Hey, how about you like to run, I like to run, these kids might like to run, let's try it." So, we did. It was very successful. We had about 40 kiddos. Our goal is to finish a 5K, and they finished the 5K. It was fun, it was awesome. We brought it here at Bennett. It was all kids, grades four through six. Because of numbers and volunteers and times and safety, it's just sixth grade. This year is our third year here at PCIS. It's our biggest group so far. We have 80 kiddos, and we are going strong. We're in our third week. We have 30 volunteers. I want to point out, we have a fantastic community. We have Casey Heinz, our mayor, who shows up every week, running, walking with these kiddos. We have Officer Lash from Pickle PD, who is here every, every week. We have someone every week from them. It's usually her, she's fantastic. We have Can't Stop Running, who's donated their time. We do a mile run, just to kind of get the kiddos a sense of run, the race. They donate their time, their equipment. They give them a little medal at the end, so that's really cool. We have grant money from the Pickle Community Foundation, who has donated all of the registration, so it doesn't cost our kiddos anything. I don't want to sit here and talk about how fun it is, I'll let these guys do that, but we also have the Kiwanis Club, who donates shoes to those that need it, who are here, ready, they just need the proper equipment, so they help with that. We have here with me tonight Tommy Grace, who's a current sixth grader, who's going to talk to you about it. He's not nervous at all. And then we have Zach Sale, who's a previous Run Club kiddo, who is now an eighth grader at Pickle Junior High. So, Tommy's going to go first, going to talk to you a little bit about what we do.
Hey, hey, short. Hey, everybody, I'm Tommy Grace, like Ms. Ayers said, and the Run Club has been amazing. Yeah, and it's really amazing how fast, like, your legs and your lungs will start getting used to it. Our first race, our first lap we did, I was running, and I could barely go for the first lap without just being like, "Phew, man." And then on our last race, man, I can do three laps and I'm all right. And our goal at the eight weeks during March?
It's May 6th.
Yeah, okay, sorry. May 6th, our goal is to do a 5K on a Sunday, and, man, that's going to be something. And it's really fun, because you also, like, I met some new friends, like Quentin Bachman. And I never really got the chance to know him, but, you know, now, Run Club, you know, we're pretty good friends now because of Run Club. And, oh yeah, it's awesome.
Tommy, how many days do we meet?
We meet two days a week, Tuesday and Thursday, and we're doing that for eight, eight weeks? Eight weeks, so, phew.
Thanks, Tommy. Good job.
Hi, my name is Zach, and I'm a previous Run Club member. Uh, Run Club changed my life a little bit. I was always the biggest kid in the class and always the slowest. But then, one of my teachers in fifth grade started walking with me and helped me get prepared for Run Club. And after all of it, I lost about 10 pounds, and I did my 3.1 miles under an hour, and that was a big improvement for me. It also helped me with football. I was not a great runner on football, and that just helped me become even better. And I've did the Run Club for the past two years, and each year, I've gotten a better time after a better time. Thank you, guys.
Tommy, it's a shame you're not bashful.
His mom was surprised when I said Tommy volunteers. She was shocked.
Tommy, I want you to know, I get just as winded running to the refrigerator, so don't feel lonely, buddy, you're good. The next group I'd like to bring up and highlight is our ASL Club. We started this year, American Sign Language here, which is something we only offered at the high school, and the advisor, co-advisor, lead teacher at the high school comes down, and that is Ms. Sarah Benzman. So, I'm going to have her introduce a little bit, and then we're going to have a video of our kids actually signing for you.
Hi, I'm Sarah Benzman. Excuse my lisp, I changed my Invisalign today, so I can hear it. Have pity with me, because I know how you all feel right now. I am the American Sign Language teacher at the high school, and I know almost all of you, so I am glad to see you here tonight. And Nate Omler, who is one of the teachers here, is actually the one who really took on this whole thing. He contacted me, and he said, and I've known him for many years, this is his first year here, and he said, "Hey, how would you feel about having ASL Club at the middle school?" And I said, "You're a genius." I didn't even ever, it never crossed my mind to do anything at the middle school. I was at the junior high last year with some of my classes in the high school this year and last year, and it just never even occurred to me that I should reach out and start doing this, and I'm always the first one to say, "Hey, you know, we really need to get kids starting languages at a younger age. All of the studies, everything shows that we need to do this earlier, why are we waiting so long?" And it hit me like a ton of bricks when I got that email, and I said, "Yes, of course. Okay, what do I need to do?" And he said, "Oh, I already talked to my principal, I just needed to make sure that you were going to do it." So, he had pretty much already had it all set up. He asked how many times we want to meet, and I said, "Okay, let's start for now, twice a month. We'll see how it goes." And we meet the first and third Tuesday of the month for 45 minutes, which is hardly enough time. But we come and we play some games, we learn different vocabulary words, we learn different information, and we ask and answer questions to each other. I actually have a couple kids here. Raise your hand, so they can all see you guys. Great, thank you. And it's just interesting, we've learned colors and school. We recently learned all of our school vocabulary, and I was much more excited than they were. But it's awesome, they come. I have high schoolers that come help every single week. We had over 60 kids our first two weeks. 60. That is, I don't know how to deal with that many middle schoolers at one time. I am a high school teacher, and I was very fortunate. I have high schoolers that come every time that we're here, and they play games with them, and they show them how to do the things that maybe I'm missing, that they're not doing the right way, and it's just really awesome to see we have that interaction between the younger students and the older students, and the interest from the younger students, and that interest from the older students to be there with the younger students and doing a lot of this stuff, and that is so cool to me, that we just have this environment at Pickle that they want to come here. I have students who hardly say anything in class and sit there and do great on their assessments, and then volunteer to come here on the first and third Tuesday of the month to help out 20, 30, 40, 50, depending on the week, 12-year-olds. So, it's awesome, it's really cool. I don't really have a lot to say about it. We do vocabulary and games and all the stuff that you would expect when we have middle school kids learning a new language. So, and this video was also Nate's idea. He did a good job. He filmed it, he put it together, he figured out what they were going to say, and all I did was show the kids how to do it.
Appreciate, appreciate Mr. Omler and Ms. Benzman's time and efforts with that. Yeah. A lot of applause. The third group I'd like to spotlight tonight is our BFF Group, and it's something that really empowers the young girls here at our school. One of our teachers that we hired last year, Ms. Crump, Ms. Magito, Ms. Ayers, and several other of our female teachers do a lot of really neat activities that teach our girls. The BFF stands for Bonding Through Food and Fitness, and so I'm going to show you, they have a brief six or seven slides or so thing about what they do, and there are several students that I would like to invite up on behalf of the BFF Club, so let's take a peek at that. The goal of that group really is to teach, teach young girls that empowerment of bonding together, healthy friendships. It's really about teaching them how to make healthy snacks, teaching the importance of nutrition, and then, of course, with things like balanced yoga here in the community, Pilates, they've done, oh my gosh, workouts. Zumba is a, is a highlight with Ms. Magito. It's a big deal, and our girls have really liked, and they feel very much empowered and inspired. Finally, I'd like to point out our K Kids Club, who does so much, and I want to recognize one of the key figures is here tonight with us, Mr. Mark Wyon over there, and I appreciate Mark being here tonight, but I want to introduce the following students who are going to come up, give you just a glimpse of what K Kids does. K Kids is our Kiwanis kids, and we have with us tonight Mr. Jackson Lyman, who's our president. We have Jasmine Oswald, who is our alternate president, we'll call her the assistant, and Aiden Sarson, who is one of our senate members. So, if the K Kids could come on up at this time.
As a K Kid, I promise to serve my neighborhood and my school. I will show respect to the environment, and I will try to make the world a better place to live.
Kids are expected to be kind, be leaders, and be examples to other kids. We do all community service. We are learning to be responsible, caring adults. We keep being in K Kids from elementary through high school.
In September, we had sign-ups for K Kids. 85 kids signed up, and we still have 75 that helped collect for hurricane victims, partnered with UVCC to deliver to Texas. And in October, K Kids run for office and make posters, glue, with glue speeches, vote and announce officers. Some of the offices that are in K Kids are the president, the vice president, the secretary, the treasurer, sergeant-at-arms in senate and congress. And in November, we plan for community projects and vote to go over roles for offices and get to know each other activities.
In December, we collected toys and books for kids and donated them to neighbors, helping neighbors, and the Bethany Center. In January, we made posters and crafts for Pickle Manor, the nursing home, and then we visited and planned PFP skate party. And at the nursing home, we played, we talked with the elders, and we did a heart that we would stick little pieces of parchment paper on, and we would give it to them so they could hang it up on their door and remind them of this time. And in February, we had pennies for patients, and we had the skate party, and then we had a pie in the face where we would get quarters and we would buy candy, and then your money goes into a box of your teacher, of your picking of your teacher, and whoever the nine that got the most, got fourth grader got three, fifth graders got three, and sixth grader got three teachers. And we had a, basically, they set it up on a stage, and the three teachers got pied in the face. And we raised $1,500, and last year, we raised $1,000.
In March, we collected items from Miami County Animal Shelter, and we sponsored for a popcorn party and the winning, for the winning homeroom. In April, we visit crafts and cookie social with Hearthead Resistance, full-up donation for soldiers, overseas partner with Chamber Headership. May, we finished Hero, finished Hero Box and get to Chamber to be mailed. Pizza for top homeroom. End of the year family picnic for kids.
That just gives a little sneak peek of the things that happen beyond academics here, and I don't know about you, but there's points when I hear, and that's really what it's about. It's about kids, it's always going to be about kids, it's going to be that way in Pickle City Schools, I believe that wholeheartedly, and it just, it gets me inside a little bit because that's why we're here, is those young people. So, thank you, guys. I sincerely want to thank the staff and students here tonight that came to present. I appreciate you parents bringing them here. I want to mention the others not represented here tonight, because they, too, are making a big impact on our students and our community. Other committees that have developed within the last two years include our Formal Dining Committee, which you can see some of the decorations, we had that today, which was a March Madness theme, which was great. I want to thank Mr. Butler and his work with the PBIS Tier One and Tier Two teams, Ms. Jones with the BAT Team, and the A-Team leadership, our Tribe Competition Committee, our Staff Spotlight Committee, our Awesome Indians, which is our Students of the Month. We have a really strong diversity committee that's getting ready to do a celebration of nations in April, right here at Pickle Central. Give you those dates in a second. A National Night Out Team for August 1st, we're one of those sites here, and I'm really proud of that work. Our Thoughtful Thursday, our Student Ambassador Tribal Council, our JV Indian Nation Station Media Team that is preparing our kids to go out and do some cool things with the high school team out there, our Breakfast of Champions, our Literacy Committee, and the Garden Tribe that's developed and formed across the street, which we're really proud of. And I want to thank the work of Ruth Kuhn and Anna Baummeister, Scott Bloom, and our community donors that have put that together for us. Believe it or not, we do have plants in the ground right now, those went in on Monday, and they promised me that those plants like snow, so they're going to grow. These committees do so much for our kids at Pickle Central, and in time, in a time where we see so much emphasis placed on passing a test, I'm here tonight to tell you that we just want to let the community and the board and our families know that we truly are invested in developing and creating experiences that shape the whole child, with hopes that they can look back at their three formative years here at Pickle Central and say they had an awesome experience while becoming extraordinary young people. So, again, I want to thank all of our teachers here and my staff. Upcoming noteworthy events I want to put out there for the community, that Celebration of Nations Diversity Night will be May the 21st from 5:30 to 8:00. We welcome community members to come in that night, and we also have an upcoming Family Math Night, Thursday, April 5th, when we return from spring break from 6:00 to 7:30. So, that is all I have this evening. Is there any questions from the board? Thank you.
Want to thank, you know, so often, you said it right, you know, so often, we talk about just the test, and it's good to see the other things that we're doing to make a, help develop completely rounded students. So, thank you, guys, all. If you want to stay for the board meeting, you can, but if you want to go home, you're not going to break our hearts either.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. I was, I was watching Mr. Messick back there while the students were presenting, and he had a big smile on his face, and I know he's thinking these kids are coming his way, and he's got some future leaders and active students coming up to the high school, so good, good work, and thank you to all the students and parents for being here as well. I know better than to follow that with anything, so I'm going to let Tony, Mr. Lyons, talk about open enrollment, since it's open enrollment season, so Tony, you're up next.
This is much less exciting than what you all just saw, I can assure you, but it is open enrollment season. There are two types of open enrollment, just briefly. There's inter-district open enrollment, which would be those students who come from outside of our district into our schools. Those applications are due May 15th, and it's important to get those in as soon as possible because we make determinations on our classroom size and our programming based on our total numbers of students. So, the intra-district open enrollment piece would be students who are moving within the district. So, student who lives in Spring Creek District that wants to go to Washington, again, those applications are due by May 15th, and anybody who turns those in after that time, ultimately, we're going to wait till after Labor Day to make decisions on those, those students, whether or not they're going to get their request, because we really have to balance out those classroom numbers to make sure that we have the right amount of kids per teacher and those kinds of things in each one of the primary buildings. So, again, May 15th, making sure that we get those applications in so we can make decisions on the enrollment process for, for open enrollment.
Just a quick note, we continue to watch attendance between the two buildings. When we, we first opened up Washington as well as Spring Creek, they were very equal. And over the last couple of years, we're starting to see some shifting, and we're just looking for some trends before we respond too quickly, but we may have to make some adjustments in boundary lines eventually. And open enrollment actually helps us sometimes balance those numbers, so it's a good thing that we have that in place to help us take care of that until we, you know, finalize any, any good boundary lines with the new two schools. Would like to just recognize the school district on receiving an award last night from the United Way for 60 years of participation in contributing to United Way, and it's the 60th anniversary for United Way, so that means since its inception, the school district has done a good job of participating, and many staffs will, will get 100% of participation throughout the year, so I just appreciate that. It's another level of, I believe, our staff showing that support of, of children in our community overall, because all those programs really affect that, so really proud about that for our district. In a moment, I'm going to put up a proposal for an overnight field trip for Pickle Central Intermediate. In the past, they've done a camp at fifth grade, and we've done that for several years, and it's been very successful. Josh and his team of teachers have spent a long time, probably well over a year, really researching to make sure that the camp gives the kids the best experience and that we're getting the best value from it. And they've visited several camps, they've, they put up a great big chart, monitored all the different aspects of it, got a lot of feedback, and they're going to switch this year to a new location. They're looking at Camp Kern, which is a YMCA-affiliated camp. This camp will not only focus on science standards, but it will do social studies as well. It will be three days and two nights with one less night, one less day. It will give them the opportunity to have camp for a $92 experience versus $150. And with the scholarships and the things that they've put in place, we believe a lot more kids are going to be able to afford it and to get into the camp, which is good because the camp actually allows more students to go at a time, which will help them with scheduling. The previous camp, only so many kids could go at a time, which worked when we had three intermediates, but when we joined, it really did kind of wreak havoc on, on what they were doing in terms of the number of students that could go. It spread the camp experience from the school perspective over several weeks because they had to get, you know, groups to go at a time. So, we believe this is going to be a much better camp when we get to that point. So, finally, school safety, of course, is a, a big topic right now, and we've worked well over a year on many initiatives, and we continue to work with the police department. We did some Phase One construction pieces last summer, we've got some more pieces coming up this summer, and we've initiated a new committee of teachers for our safety committee, and it's just going to give us a chance to just sit and talk. We want to hear from teachers, we, we've been out and about doing that a lot, informally, but we want to do that in a kind of a formal setting. Just kind of threw it out there and just said, "Who's interested?" How many did we have right away? It's 35, 35, 40 people have stepped forward, and we were surprised. We, I mean... We, I mean, all good feedback, they're excited about it, they want to come, they want to hear some of the things that are, that are going on, they've got some good suggestions. We're encouraging students to communicate with teachers as well, and we've met with student groups out at the high school to hear from them, so we're getting good feedback, and, and it's, it's just, you know, good conversation. Along that line, the Ohio School Board Association has proposed a, an addendum here for, for boards to approve. I believe most superintendents in the counties that I've spoken to would like to do the resolution at their board meetings this month, and I know Andy's going to share that here. It's encouraging our local and state and national legislatures to step forward and really support safe schools and to, to put some money and programming and some ideas out there that, that allows that to happen. So I'll let Andy read this, and then if you guys would like to approve it, we'll move forward with that.
This has been promoted by Ohio School Boards Association, that's going all over Ohio, as whereas school violence has become an epidemic in the United States of America. Whereas the children and school employees of our nation deserve to attend school without fear of death or injury, and their families deserve to send them to school without the same fear. Whereas there is a mutual responsibility of all citizens to address this problem, and the responsibility for preventing violent incidents cannot be neglected or relegated to school districts alone. Whereas multiple students have shown that the majority of Americans support action to eliminate violence in our schools. Whereas school board members, administrators, employees, and community members should work together with lawmakers, legal counsel, law enforcement and security experts to determine how best to ensure student safety in their district. Whereas be it resolved that the Pickwa City School District Board of Education implores the President, President of the United States, the Governor of the State of Ohio, the United States Congress, and the Ohio General Assembly to prioritize the protection of students and school employees by enacting legislation with funding for the following. Enhanced mental health services and substance abuse treatment so that all individuals, including children, have sufficient access to these services. Increased access to school safety measures, including but not limited to school resource officers, school safety infrastructure, and other security measures designed to protect students and staff from an active shooter on school grounds. Training for school employees and enhanced coordination with law enforcement agencies and first responders to ensure appropriate responses to incidents of violence in schools. Preserving the bound, the balance between the right to own firearms and the protection of students and school employees from any and all violence. This resolution will be moved and passed this twenty-second day of March, 2018.
Thank you. That's all I have for my report, and I'm ready to move on to the agenda if you're ready for that. Recommend the board to approve the open enrollment certification with the Ohio Department of Education for the school year 2018 through 2019. Recommend board approval of the attached request for Pickwa Central Intermediate for an overnight field trip for an outdoor education program. Like to recommend approval of the attached resolution supporting school safety and reducing violence in schools. Would like to recommend the board approval of the attached list of technology equipment for disposal and removal for the inventory of the Pickwa City School District. And as always, we make sure that we take everything that we can reuse, and the rest will be discarded environmentally safe.
Do we have a motion to accept the superintendent's agenda?
So move.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll on this one.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mr. Patrizio.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Bostic.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye. Motion carries. Personnel agenda, Mr. Lyons.
So, a couple of highlights from the personnel agenda this evening. The first one I'm going to share is Jenny Gerhart, who is currently an assistant principal and at Pickwa Central Intermediate School, and with a heavy heart has decided to resign that position, and we're fortunate enough to, to keep her as, as a teacher. She'll be teaching English at Pickwa Junior High School next year, so, thank you and congratulations for you, so. Also, we have Connie Straley is here somewhere back here, but you are, I'm going to recommend her retirement resignation this evening from, as the principal of Spring Creek Primary School. Congratulations and thank you, Connie.
Absolutely. Connie's had forty-four years in public education, and she's done everything from kindergarten all the way through twelfth grade, physical education, counseling, teaching, principalship at all levels. She's been here for four years and has served us very, very well, but she's got some family, family wanting to spend some more time with her, and I think my favorite story she shared with me was her sixteen-year-old grandson actually walked by his girlfriend at a high school event to give her a hug first, and I think that says a lot about the love that her grandkids have for her, so we're just really, I'm so happy for you, Connie, and thank you very much for the, for the service that you've given us and the students in our community.
Thanks again, Connie. And, and moving into the next phase of the principalship at, at Spring Creek, and I know Ross's family are all very patient here, so Ross Lautenbach will be our new hire, our, our new lead principal at Spring Creek Primary School, and fortunately, he's been able to work with, with two great lead principals in the past, in both Josh, who you saw earlier, and Connie Straley, and he's very well prepared to take on this position as the, as the lead principal at Spring Creek Primary, we're happy to have him, so.
Josh, would you like to come, Josh? Ross, I, Ross, would you like to come forward and introduce your family to us and say a few words?
And that's amazing, those young ladies have been perfect right there tonight.
I don't know about you, but I'm worn out. I wish Tommy was here, I'd have him do my talking for me. Yeah, real quick, this is my wife, Janelle, our youngest daughter, Charlotte. She's, yep, she's in the stages of learning how to talk. This is Harper, our two-and-a-half-year-old, Ava, our eight-year-old, and Reagan, aka our hippie, six-years-old.
And we're done.
Yeah, just real quick, I just want to thank the board for their vote of confidence, number one. Dwayne and Tony, thank you very much, greatly appreciate that. There's many more thank-yous to give. Josh, for all his support. Connie, thank you very much, she's been a, a great mentor this year, really helped guide me through the process. Jenny, last year, I've been very blessed to come into Pickwa with open arms and just unlimited support, so I, I want to thank everybody for that, and I, again, I want to thank my family for being here to support me tonight. You know, lots of other thank-yous to give, Scott, Teresa, Mindy, Tracy, they go on and on, so, very blessed and very grateful for the opportunity. Looking forward to working with, I'm going to take that real quick. Continuing to work with the Spring Creek staff, it's a great staff, a lot of great things on the horizon, so, again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ross, we look very forward to having you in that position and look forward to seeing some of the great things ahead. I think it's only appropriate that he gets Jim Palmer as a secretary, since he's got a house full of young ladies and he goes to work with a bunch of, of ladies, so it's, it's good that you get at least one male there to work with, so, welcome aboard. Thank you for all being here.
Before I ask for approval for the, the agenda, just a quick update on staffing. We have currently a few openings in, in the teaching area. We're going to begin doing the job fairs kind of heavily in April, so I think there are five or six in April that we're going to be attending. Currently, grade three at Washington Primary, grade five math here at Pickwa Central, we have the success bound position, which is a replacement for the, the business position at the high school, and the electronic position, which is the math support piece at, at the high school as well. So, just to give you an idea of what Jenny moving into the English position, that's also going to open up an additional principal, assistant principalship, so we're going to be searching out and meeting with staffs at both buildings to develop a profile for the assistant principal in the next week or two, and get those posted and hired in a timely, timely fashion as well. So, yeah, like I said, five job fairs coming up, it's going to be busy, principals go with it, go with us, and it's a great time to meet some new candidates, so. With that, I'll ask for board approval, the personnel agenda is presented.
Do we have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
I'll make the motion, and I'd like to tell Connie congratulations and retire. When Connie came on, we were kind of in a world of hurt, and she really did a wonderful job, coming in with her staff and turning it around. And Ross, good luck, you got all these girls, now some more.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And I think we all say the same thing to Connie and Jenny both, new things to come up, and we appreciate everything you've done for us so far. We have a motion in a second, Mr. Hiddle, please call the roll on this.
Mr. Bostic.
Aye.
Mr. Patrizio.
Aye.
Mr. Ford.
Aye.
Mrs. McMackin.
Aye.
Mr. Height.
Aye, motion carries. I have nothing on hearing of the public for non-agenda items. I don't believe there's any old business to come before the board tonight. New business, Mr. Lyons, briefly, we're, another reading of the policy update.
And I think this is for approval, it's the second reading, so we're going to approve those. In the initial section, it talks about volume thirty-six, number two, what, one of the things that's really nice is Neela gives us a quick update, so if there's something coming legislative, we'll get an update, so for instance, with the ETPEZ teacher evaluation, that's on our radar, those kinds of things. Also, quickly, I'll run through them, forty-one twenty-one's revision to the criminal history or background check, forty-one sixty-two is adding specifics, especially with the opioid, opioid crisis, specific drugs are going to be tested for with our CDL holders. Fifty-one eleven is eligibility of resident, non-resident students, has to be on the website, so there's an electronic piece that has to go along with that as well. Fifty-one twelve is going to revise the entrance requirements specifically for people that are coming in outside of the district, brand-new people to the district. It adds things like, instead of having to have a birth certificate, family bible, baptismal record, adoption records are acceptable for enrollment now. Seventy-five thirty, clear requirements for staff using school-owned electronic devices, specifically FERPA requirements, making sure that we're safe and secure with those. Seventy-five thirty point zero-two, personal communication devices, it changed the language to include P-C-D, personal communication devices, so we've got an update on that, so as you are going to approve. Seventy-five forty-two allows the board to differentiate between business network and guest network for wireless users in our buildings, and there's an agreement that has to go along with that when you sign in. Seventy-five forty-three, additional resources that could be added to things that can be accessed on the district network list, and that includes a list of recommendations for your website. Eighty-four hundred adds requirements to the emergency management plan, which we all expected, and requirements for boards of education to approve those on an annual basis and to do updates to those on an annual basis. Eighty-six hundred point zero-four adds the texting while driving language as a disqualifier for those driving a van or bus, so if you're convicted of that, you will now be disqualified as a candidate for those, which makes perfect sense. Ninety-one forty-one, business advisory council reflects the requirements for House Bill Forty-Nine, again, annual updates and annual approval and sent to the Ohio Department of Education for approval. And just, that's the final one, I just want to quickly say, as I grew up Pickwa now the other day, and Dwayne and, and the board of education got compliments, Dan French mentioned that he was at the Governor's Advisory Council, which this is based on, and we were one of two districts that actually have active business advisory councils, and out of the, the rest of the nineteen, I think there are, nobody else even knew what it was, so this one's been going on for years, and we got a great council, so it's good to, to see that too. That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Lyons? Hey, if not, then we have a motion to approve the board policy updates.
So move.
Have a second? Have a motion in a second, if there's no further discussion, all in favor signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And there's no further business come before the board. Our next meeting will be April twenty-sixth, six p.m. at the junior high. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you all.